Broadcast have.
Good evening, everyone. The time is now five oh one and I call to order. The January thirty first, twenty twenty three Policy and Governance Committee meeting. My name is Albert Stone Reese, Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee and student member of the board. Brings me great pleasure to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting and look forward to the work of the committee tonight. We'll start with introductions of committee members, then administration staff, followed by board office staff and board legal counsel. Start of my vice chair.
Good evening, Walter Fields, Vice Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee. Uh, very happy to be with all of my colleagues this evening.
Hi Pamela Boozer Struther, District Three Board of Education Member, Member of the Committee.
Hello, everyone. Jonathan Briggs, uh, District Two Board Member and Member of the Policy and Governance Committee.
Good evening, Robin Welsh, Director of Government Relations, Compliance and Procedures.
Hi, everyone. My name is Cindy Adley. I'm one of the administrative secretaries to the board office.
Good evening, everyone. Dennis Whitley the third, uh, with the law firm of Shipley and Horn for Board Counsel.
Alright, thank you, everyone. Uh, we have a quorum, so we can start. So start with one point three adoption of the meeting agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the January thirty first, twenty twenty three meeting agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the, uh, January thirtieth, twenty twenty three meeting agenda.
Is there a second? Has been moved and properly second to adopt the January thirty first, twenty twenty three meeting agenda. Any objections? Hearing none, motion passes. Alright, one point four approval of the committee meeting minutes. Have a motion to approve the January seventeenth, twenty twenty three meeting minutes. Any motions?
I moved to adopt the, uh, January seventeenth, twenty twenty three meeting minutes.
Do a second.
Second.
Has been moved and properly second to approve the January seventeenth, twenty twenty three meeting minutes. Any objections? Hearing none, motion passes. So, public comment, there are no registered public comments speakers this evening. Registered public comment speakers can be live, pre-recorded, using video or audio or written, so we encourage the public. Um, to come speak before the committee and share their opinions and thoughts. So, three point O legislative update. We have an update on MAB Legislative Committee meetings, so yield the floor to Ms. Welsh to update us on the MAB Legislative Committee.
Thank you. Um, so we just, uh, received, I think on Friday, the, um, education advocate, which is. You see on, on the, uh, screen right now, which is a, um, a, um, document that the MAB, Maryland Association of Boards of Ed sends out. To each of the local, uh, school boards and, and administrative staff too. Um, that provides a legislative highlights and what's happening with the different bills that are coming through the legislature. Um, I just want to briefly just highlight for you a couple of bills that there, there was discussion about both in the MAB Committee meeting. Um, on January twenty third, as well as what is listed as highlights in this document. So the first one had to do with the, um. House Bill one nineteen, um, Senate Bill one ninety nine, which was a comprehensive health education framework. Bill with, of which, uh, MAB opposed and all of the, um, um, uh, Boards of Ed representatives that were at that meeting. They voted on it and they, there was, um, your name, uh, a, um. I guess a quorum that voted on saying yes, that they did oppose this. And the reason they opposed it was because the bill itself is basically. Uh, requiring that, um. That the state will be the state and the, the legislature are basically, uh, basically dictating to local Boards of Ed. That they need to have a, a specific, um, curriculum and that the curriculum, uh, or, um, uh. How they're actually supposed to develop the curriculum on top of that and then establishing a method for parents. I think, uh, audience to opt out of certain topics in the curriculum. And in Maryland, the authority has always relied with the, um, with the local Boards of Education and the superintendent slash CEO. In terms of adopting curriculum or courses to study or selection of textbook. So. By the main reason that, uh, MAB did oppose this is because. Uh, they do support local decision making of the local Boards of Ed when it comes to. To, uh, developing curriculum assessments, grade, grading policies, instructional programs. And this particular bill would, uh, really set precedent for. In the future, other curricular areas being dictated by the legislature instead of by the local school boards. So that was the first thing they, uh, shared in this. Document. The second bill that they are opposing is House Bill eighty five, Senate Bill two oh six, which has to do with collective bargaining. And that particular bill authorizes, um, the local school systems and the teacher associations to negotiate the topic of class size. And although class size is always desirable. Uh, in this instance, the unintended consequence of passing this bill would consist of, first of all, school systems across the state would need to expand. Facilities, add new classrooms. They would need to add additional teachers. Um, they would, the other issue is when you reduce class size, it's very closely related to planning, timing and funding of school construction projects. And the, then the school systems and the, I, the associations would need to finalize their contracts by the end of the fiscal year. And contract term, which is not always the case. Frequently, not just Prince George's County Public Schools, but many school systems find themselves. Not being able to finalize the contract and they end up negotiating further into the, into the summer and the following school year. So. Just the logistics of that would be, would be very problematic. And finally, um, they also shared that the blueprint was never designed to provide funding for additional teachers or new classrooms to achieve smaller class size. So this would be a significant financial impact for school system. So they have, uh, opposed that. And then the final bill that they talked about in this document was, um, House Bill two ninety four. And that one is due process proceedings for children with disabilities burden of proof. And they, um, did oppose it. And the reason they did was because shifting the burden of proof to school systems would then present, uh. Set the presumption that school systems are not meeting a student's needs and impose a new workout and legal liability. Ability on school systems and staff to prove that they are meeting the students' needs. And then it would all, by shifting the burden of proof away from parents, it would result in an unlimited potential. For such complaints to be filed and unlimited burden on the school system to devote staff time and legal resources to refute, to refute such claims. So they have opposed that bill also. Um, the other things that they did talk about in the document, there's a lot of information about Governor Moore's education budget and the fiscal. Year twenty twenty four, school construction funding. So that has important information in there about that. And then it does provide bill reports and hearing schedules and advocacy resources. So I strongly encourage. Um, all Board Ed, Education Members as well as Community Members to please to take advantage of the opportunity just to read through this document. It's very informative and provides important information and things that you might want to weigh in on, um, as the legislative session proceeds. Any questions?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just have a couple comments and question. One, I, I did want to note with the class size, um. That certainly has been, uh, significant advocacy point in our school construction. Funding, uh, advocacy that we've been doing. And I think this is just another. Um, opportunity to, to make that case around. School construction is priority, which, um, of course, as we know, is really just. Uh, the political will for that is just really, uh, bubbled up in the last few years, uh, positively. Um, the, um. Burden of proof in special education cases, what I would ask is that we. Ask for an opinion from the Special Education Advisory Committee of Prince George's County and also a briefing. On, uh, their opinion on that. I think, you know, other states do put the burden of proof on, um, the school systems. And I think. As a board member, I would really like to understand this better and ask for. Some more information on that and the view, the viewpoints within the special education advocates, if that could be noted. I'm not making a position on, on, on this right now, just asking for, for more stakeholders to be involved in this discussion about burden of proof. Um, I think that's all. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Did you have anything to say?
Oh, I did want to say is that, um, I have already, uh, uh, sent an email to Janelle Bowman and our Bowman, our Associate Superintendent. To get her take on this and, and you know, what information she might share. And since she probably is, I would assume, and I will follow up with her. Chairs, the Advisory Committee for the Special Ed, for the, for the Parents Special Ed Committee, I will follow up with her about that also.
Yeah, I think she, um, has the oversight, but I do believe that citizens are the actual. Seats of leadership, um, to be consulted.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. For Member Briggs.
Yeah, thanks so much, uh, Ms. Walsh, for the presentation. Similar to, um, Board Member Boozer Strutter, I had a question about the burden of proof in special education cases. Um, it just more pertains to equity. So thinking about the burden of proof that lies. On parents to kind of, you know, prove their case against, uh, the school's legal team. Um, the school system's legal team, I think, is, is something that I'd love to know more about as far as, um, you know, what. What requirements exist there around what parents would need to do and what burdens are placed on parents, um, as it pertains to being able to kind of prove. Prove their case. Um, and so I would, would just, I guess, ask if there's any additional information that you could share or that you could draw out from. What was discussed, um, is like, you know, text that we could read or PDFs or something that we could kind of see a little bit more of the legal ramifications on parents. Um, based on this, this, uh, vote.
Then I will, I check with our Officer General Counsel. We have an attorney who deals specifically with special ed cases. And I'm sure he can provide some information that I can be, that I can share with the committee.
Okay, thanks so much.
Vice Chair Fields.
Yes, I, I just wanted to mention that on the class size issue, you know, it's the cost of good intentions. You know, we all agree that class size should be smaller. And I think this is an area that the legislature is going to have to revisit. Um, as sort of an addendum to the blueprint. Because there are two sort of oppositional forces at work. It's school construction and it's the teacher pipeline. So if you have smaller classes, you're going to need more teachers. And so we're not there yet, um, as a district or a state. But I do believe that, you know, we have as a district, um, affirmed our support for the idea that a smaller. Classroom size is, um, optimal for children's learning. Um, and I think the public just needs to understand that. Our opposition is not based upon not believing that, just that the circumstances as they stand today. Uh, would not allow it. And if you put it into a collective bargaining agreement, that is something that contractually, you would have to meet. Even if you didn't have the capacity to do so, and it would create, uh, major problems for the district.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, Ms. Welsh, if you could, um, take note of this and then I guess, uh, bring it back in your next update in future meeting.
Okay, I will.
Thank you. Alrighty, we'll now move on to three point two, uh, May Blueprint Implementation Ad Hoc Committee with Ms. Boozer Strutters.
Oh, thank you so much. Um, so last time I had noted that I would be attending a meeting of the committee. However, that was postponed. As the, uh, committee through May sent a letter to Governor Wes Moore, uh, making some points about the blueprint, including infrastructure. For pre-K as a number one issue, that letter hadn't been responded to, so we're going to set a date. To meet when there's a response from the governor's office. Um, and of course, uh, February fourteenth, uh, we will have Dr. Carl Libby. And her entire implementation planning team joining us along. I think, I think she's inviting some other. Uh, leads in the system for this presentation to our committee on the fourteenth. And, uh, and just to note, uh, the rollout of the survey, the public comments survey. On the blueprint is posted and, uh, the sit, through the new e-newsletters of PG CPS and. Individuals pushing this out and, uh, schools through, through their programs will be getting, uh, survey feedback. So encourage. All of our stakeholders to take this survey. Uh, thank you so much.
Thank you. Colleagues, any comments or questions? For Member Briggs.
Yeah, um, thanks so much, um, Chair, uh, Serona Ruiz, and thanks so much, um, Board Member Boozer Strutter. I just had a question around who makes up the ad hoc committee. It was just open to you, and, and you don't have to give details of names. I'm just curious, like, who, the kind of, uh, buckets of people. So someone from the legislature, someone from school district, um, as an example, like, what makes up the ad hoc committee?
Yeah, so this is a committee of, of MAB. So twelve of the twenty four. District boards were invited and individuals en- engaged in blueprint advocacy were specifically identified. So I re- I received a specific invite because of my. Pretty visible role on blueprint for some years. So when the committee was created last year, I received that invitation. Um, so I imagine it's a seat, you know, in the future for rolling participation of. You know, the other twelve districts, um, to roll in or representatives from the existing twelve and, um. Uh, in, and of course, it spans the, you know, the urban, the largest systems and urban through the middle suburban and rural. Are all covered in the twelve of the twenty four.
Okay, yeah, I was just, um, because I think I might have read this already, that the board, the, the ad hoc committee made up members of each of the districts from different. Um, backgrounds, both racial, you know, gender, and then also, of course, makeups of the, the different areas of the state. Just wanted to confirm that that was the case, that there's like a kind of a diverse set of perspectives that make up the ad hoc committee.
Well, um, I, I guess I just want to make sure that, I mean. That, that sounds like the conversations for the, the implementation board. So I ju- I just want to make sure we're talking about the same. Same thing, because this, this committee is of the associate, of MAB's association. It's internal to the association. So it, it didn't go through, I think, the same level of public scrutiny that, that you're saying about the AIB. So I just want to make sure we're talking about the, the same, uh, groups.
No, I think what you just mentioned was probably, I was referring to the AIB. So, um, that's a good clarification. Okay, okay. And I probably should just do some reading on this, but I was just trying to see if you could just clarify, like, what the ad hoc committee does. And I might have missed that if I did. I apologize when you presented.
Oh, no, not a problem. And I'd be happy to meet with you one on one on, on all aspects of what's transpired with, um, the blueprint. So call on me anytime I offer that to any of our colleagues. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, moving on down to four point O policies for discussion. So tonight, there are five policies for discussion. Uh, tonight we adhere to the five minute, three minute rules of discussion. So start with four point one, which is Board Bylaw ninety three sixteen meetings of the board. I'll yield the floor again to Ms. Welsh to give us an update on the proposed revisions to this po- bylaw.
So actually, um, I don't think we actually have any more revisions to that bylaw. I think it was just, um, discussed that it was going to come back for further discussion. I don't, I don't have any revisions that I was, as a place up into that policy, um. So, um. I didn't make any changes, so I'm just, um. That's about the best I can tell you. So I don't, you know, but it is up for discussion.
Alrighty. So colleagues, do, do we have any discussion or, you know, questions you guys have regarding the bylaw itself? Vice Chair Field.
Um, I have a question on location of board meetings. Is it required that board meetings must be held in Sasser? Um, or could a board, uh, could a board meeting be moved to another location if we wanted to have a meeting closer to a specific community? Uh, would this prevent us from doing that? I'm just reading the language where it says. Uh, will occur in the boardroom of the Administration Building in Upper Marlboro.
At, I would want to research that for you, but off the top of my head, I don't think that would be a problem. I know in the past, they have actually done budget hearings. Um, where they, they have the part where they ask questions and the community can ask questions. And then they actually have the hearing piece. And they've done it in different high schools across the county. So I would assume they could do that also with a board meeting.
Like to welcome Chair Mickens Murray. I didn't see you come in, um.
Thank you. Um, for the answer to the question for, um, Board Member of Fields. Uh, since I've been on this board, the regular board meetings have always, to my knowledge, been at Sasser. Now, the board meetings for special things like the budget or the community hearings, yeah, we've gone out to the community. But those kinds of, uh, meetings. So I'm not sure, we would definitely have to engage the, the, uh. Community, because what I see is we could get into a situation where if we're going to the. South more than we're going to the north versus. We could get into a game of, uh, kind of semantics, fairness and all of that, if we move the regular board meeting. When we do the, uh, budget hearings in person, we usually choose North, South, Center, so that we can, um. Go to all of the parts of the county, throughout the county. So if, if you guys discuss that and want to change that, just give it some thought and make sure that you hear, uh, from the commu- from the community. But as long as I've been in this county, all board meetings, uh, have been from the Sasser.
I appreciate that, uh, 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 Chair, uh, Mickens Murray. I think, I think what I'm trying to figure out is if there are ways to increase. Um, community engagement at our meetings, uh. That we could do that perhaps by having a board meeting outside of the Sasser building. And I understand that we sort of have competing interests in terms of where. Uh, but I think that is something that we could probably, uh, figure out to some degree. Um, I'm just always interested in figuring out how we get more citizen participation and parent participation at our meetings.
Thank you. I also welcome Board Members Apura Miller. I see your hand is up as well. Doctor Miller.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Sorry about that. I'm in transition. I'm, I'm almost at that stationary place, but, um. I was going to comment, and you may have already commented on this. When we talk about the board meetings being held at Sasser, do we want to lock ourselves in? So I guess, let me give an example. Let's say that we schedule a retreat and the retreat happens to coincide with the day of the board meeting. So do we have the board meeting virtually because we're offsite, probably still in the county, but offsite? Or can we just have it in that location as a face-to-face board meeting? I don't know if that makes sense.
It does. Uh, Ms. Welsh, do you think is some. Provision maybe added to it, um, I guess to, for like, s- special circumstances that are being brought up. Um, some language regarding, um. I, I, I don't know what, really what it would say, um, but something along the lines, I guess, that. If the board is meeting in another location, they're able to meet as a board, um, they're not restricted by the policy. Kind of feel like that's what's really been brought up, so I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
No, I absolutely could. I could make that change, uh, but I did see that, uh, Board Member, uh, Megan's Murray's. Ham was up, and so she may have a thought related to, uh, especially the question related to the, uh, uh, retreat and board meetings. So. Um, I don't know, but I, I, I'll, I'll do whatever you all think we should do. I don't think that is a, a legal issue at all. I think it's more about what your preference is.
Chair Mickens Murray.
Um, well, uh, Jonathan had his hand up and I think Pam, so you can go through them first and then you come back to me.
Will do. I'll go Board Member Briggs, followed by Boozer Strutter.
Yeah, I just wanted to say for the record that, um, the only, the only thing that I would have a concern with around the suggestion is just access. Because I know that we're mic'd and that we have cameras at the, at the board meetings. I feel like that is really important for the public to hear us, to see us. To know who's talking and then also any, you know, um, outside public comment, they can hear those things too. So I would just want to make sure that. Whatever we do do and choose to change, that is also adequate and it's appropriate for the public to participate.
For Member Boozer Strutter.
Oh, thank you. Um, I, you know, I'm, I'm reading this, you know, the phrase, unless otherwise noted, is the beginning of the, this. Language here around board meetings will occur in the boardroom. So maybe, unless otherwise noted, has always given us that permission to have our. Meetings in other locations and in the boardwork sessions, you know, certainly. I was going to notice, Mr. Briggs, that it is a production, um, when we, I've experienced many of these and we definitely. Does help to be in our high schools with the more modern auditoriums, um, and the cameras. It is, the cameras are brought, it is, we recreate the board meeting with the same, uh, live stream. Uh, onsite at these auditoriums. Um, so it is a very big staff production. Um, the board has to have a green room for our private space, um, staff and. Um, of course, administration and staff who are part of the board meeting have to travel to that site as well. Um, so. But we, we can do it. You know, I've been through a lot of them and they are very well-produced offsite. So it's, um, something that I hope will, will keep that option open and, and hope that the, unless otherwise noted, uh, does cover that.
Okay, uh, one of the other things you might consider is that executive session. And you also must consider the other staff that's involved, because we can't just. Although it's a production like Pam stated, we just can't go to another school and say, okay, tonight you're going to do the board meeting. We have folks at Sasser that does that, and they're all centrally located at Sasser. So it's, it's a lot to go into the logistics. It's not as simple as just picking up and we go to a board meeting. So maybe, uh, if you leave the policy the way it is, if you want to go somewhere and do another board meeting, all you need to do is vote on it. And do it. This comes up for a vote and we do it. So it's that, that's some part that it, it impacts more lives than just the fourteen board members.
No, I, I, I understand that. Um, and I think if the policy. And I think, uh, Board Member Boozer Strutter is, is correct, the, unless otherwise noted. Uh, gives you the leeway to be able to do that. Um, as a board. Uh, knowing what it would take to do it, I would still encourage it. Um, I think that, um, as a board, we have to take whatever steps are necessary to make sure. That we are encouraging that type of engagement. And for, you know, a lot of folks, Upper Marlboro is not, you know, easy access. Uh, we're in a big county. And so, you know, I would like to see at some point that at least one meeting per year.
I'm sorry.
That at least one meeting per year, um, is held, um, outside of Sasser.
Right. So I guess we could proceed, um. With the policy, with the bylaw as it is, um, recognizing that the language does stay unless noted. Um, and being cognizant that, uh, we may want to have a board meeting outside of Sasser at some point. But like the Chair has stated, uh, we may just take a vote or, um, it may be a vote to suspend the rules or something like that. Um, to the extent if we really did want to have that engagement. Um, so with that.
And, and, uh, by, uh, Chair Avro, let me add one other thing. You know, since COVID, people have gotten pretty used to watching things on TV and Zoom. It's not that people are not engaging with us and it's not that they're not watching these board meetings, because they are, uh, they really do. And we hear from people when they want to talk to us. When, when you have the audience out there, the only time that they can engage is with the public comment. So you're talking about fifteen people, that's the max. So all I am saying is that COVID. Put us in the situation of just accepting doing things just a little bit different. And it's a little more convenient. So, so I wouldn't say that people are not engaged. They're very much engaged. I mean, we see it, they write us, they talk to us. I mean, we see it. They write us. They talk to us. So um but I won't prolong it. We can always do it if you guys hope for it.
So yes, we can move forward and take action on the Ms. Welsh.
So um before I will have to go again through OGC approval and through Dr. Goldson, but I did want to point out, I was just looking at the minutes from from uh that I asked session and it does say that about the, I think it was actually board member Boozer Strutter who recommended this, that they we wait until we get past the legislative session in case there's any changes that might impact that policy so that we would have it up to date. I don't know if you want to continue that route or not. And I did see one other thing that I I and I apologize for missing this about inclement weather. And so I will definitely put in at the next time, but um I don't know if you want to, I I can absolutely take it through the process and get it to Dr. Goldson or if in fact you want to wait till after the legislative session.
Um I think I think the note to wait would be preferable. Um so it doesn't take space for the next policy governance committee crew next year. Um it's not taking away the spot from another policy that they may want to work on next year. Um but they have to, you know, make the revisions because of the bill. So um I guess if everyone is in agreeance, um I would like to push this policy until signed eye. Um which I believe is mid-April. I don't have the exact date.
Like that.
Um but until that, the meeting after that, after signed eye. So would believe it may be a motion table.
Yes.
Would anyone like to make a motion? Have a motion to table.
I move that we table uh the board policy ninety-three sixty.
Until the first meeting.
Until the first meeting after the legislative session has concluded.
Have a second. Alrighty, any objections? Hearing none. Um this.
I think Robin's hand was up. Was it? Is it still up?
No, I apologize. I didn't close. Take it down. Thank you.
All right, hearing none. Um this bylaw will be postponed until the end of legislative session. Good. Alrighty, moving forward. So colleagues, please note um that the following policies um from four point two to four point five, um these policies are being proposed to be merged into one as they all speak to the same matter of attendance. Um so yield the floor to Ms. Welsh to give us an update um and kind of the purpose in terms of this merger.
Okay, so the um policies that we're speaking, talking about tonight are policy is policy zero one one three, school boundaries, attendance areas. And then policy five one one zero point two attendance, then policy eight three nine one boundary changes and then policy twenty-five seventy closing of school buildings. So I would like to just give a little bit of information about what each policy says and then also the base, the legal basis for that policy and what we need to, what it is requiring. So the um policy zero one one three um that policy um and Cindy, you're you're on ninety-three sixty. Just to let you know. So um policy one one zero one one three, uh school boundaries and attendance areas. It basically says that the Board of Education authorizes the CEO to set boundaries and provide guidance in developing a system of school boundaries, also known as attendance areas. But it's still basically the um it is the um Board of Education that actually sets the boundaries after receiving the recommendation from the CEO. And if you look at our education article four one zero nine, it says with the advice of the county superintendent, the county board shall develop determine the geographic area for each school established under this section. So that's the first one. Then the second one, policy five one one zero point two attendance. It says again that the Board of Education authorizes the CEO to establish a system of school attendance areas. And it also provides guidelines for establishing those attendance areas. Um and it says, but if you read through the policy, it says when new attendance areas are established and approved by the Board of Education, parents and legal guardians will be informed in writing. So ultimately, it is still the Board of Education that is setting the boundaries after they do receive a recommendation from the CEO. And again, that is in line with education article four dash one oh nine. Uh which says with the advice of the county superintendent, the county board shall determine the geographic area for each school established under this section. So both of those policies are almost identical, except for the fact that they each give a little bit different guidance and could easily be uh put together uh with all the guidance in one policy. Um then we have policy eighty-three ninety-one boundary changes. And it's interesting, it's only one sentence that policy and all it says is all actions relative to boundary changes shall be taken at the meeting immediately subsequent to which a first reader has been uh has been introduced and public notification and meetings involve public input have have has been accomplished. And I'm not really sure why we have that policy because we actually, if you look at your uh ninety-three sixty, which talks about the process of first reader and and then second reader and and the fact that first readers to give notification and then second reader is when you actually approve it. But on top of that, you look then at your other policies which are related to boundary changes and it and your administrative procedure talks significantly about getting input from the public before if you finally make this decision. So I I'm not even certain that policy was necessary because that is something that is addressed through several other policies. And then finally, we have policy twenty-five seventy closing of school buildings and I had asked, I well, actually OGC brought that one up, so I thought, well, maybe the fact that you have to close a building some, when you close a building, sometimes that does impact the boundary or the attendance area, maybe that would want to, you'd want to include that in the actual uh it with the other policies. The um and that policy, the it says the board directs the CEO to periodically determine by systematic study the status of the current and projected use of the educational facilities and with regard to efficient utilization of space and the effective delivery of instruction to reassign students accordingly or to close schools when necessary and practiceable policy is in alignment with uh and this policy is in alignment with education article four dash one twenty. And that particular policy, uh that particular law says that in Prince George's County, the CEO shall have the authority to consolidate schools if con- considered practicable and arrange for transportation for students to and from consolidated schools. Now, saying that and that the that law was passed in two thousand thirteen. And then we have uh we do have a regulation, Comar thirteen eight point oh two oh point oh nine. And that actually throws the decision-making for the closing of schools to the Board of Education. So the regulation is not in alignment with the actual law. I will say that Comar, the date for when that was developed was back in nineteen eighty-nine. So um we are currently operating as uh uh under what education article four dash one twenty says, which is that it is the CEO that makes the decision to consolidate schools and we have, we actually have examples of it when the decision was to made to uh close Tanglewood, that was the CEO's decision. Um so um I I what I would, I is I come hit to you all first to get your guidance on how you would like to proceed. But secondly, I would recommend for the closing of schools since we're actually, and I suspect I what I, it might be necessary to even contact the Attorney General just to get some advice from them in terms of, you know, which which plays out, which is the, do we follow Comar? Do we follow education article four dash uh one twenty to make the final decision. But in fact, if it plays out that four dash one twenty is the actual um law that we need to follow, which gives the authority to the CEO and not to the Board of Education, then probably I'd be recommending that maybe that would sit separate only because the other policies are giving the authority to the Board of Education. And this policy would give the authority to the to the CEO. Again, that is your decision. But I do think we can easily make a decision about the first three policies. And then I would want to get more information from the Attorney General to get their guidance on how to to really interpret the law. And Dennis, if you think differently, please, you know, please jump in.
I think you did a great job of explaining it and uh you took the words right out of my mouth with reference to reaching out to the Attorney General with some guidance on the Comar versus the the state law.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, I'll now open the floor for discussion. Vice Chair Fields.
I think it makes sense to consolidate them um for sure. Um and I only had one question on oh one one three on line five. Um I think we should clean up the language a little because it reads uh school attendance should include as many walking students as can be accommodated. And it's just a little clumsy, the language. So maybe students in close proximity because we use in close proximity and all the other policies. But when you read walking students, it sounds like you are only talking about students who have the ability to walk to the school building. And I think that just just raises, when I read that, it just raised a little red flag for me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Briggs.
Yeah, um Ms. Welsh, I really appreciate again you walking through the document, the documents. Um and I hate to ask this. But I would actually have a question around policy twenty-five seventy, so. I guess in theory, as I'm thinking through it, it would make sense like, you know, let's say uh water pipe burst and the school is out of operation and so you have to have an emergency action to consolidate schools, right? You have to move students to other schools. That shouldn't be a kind of a drawn-out process. The board has a determined with like, you know, district lines and boundaries, but that would be more so an emergency action that the superintendent has to take. So I would probably just be curious around that piece, like if there's any additional context because i- if there is language we could include in there, if this is an emergency action, then it's very different distinct from the boundary process. And then the other thing I was going to say was that for um sorry, I just lost myself. Okay, for policy eighty-three ninety-one, um I would eh this is the school district and boundary matters internal board policies. This is the one that says all actions relative to boundary changes shall be taken at the meeting immediately subsequent to the which the first reader has been introduced. Um I would just be curious to know the um I guess maybe with the Attorney General's office, like if there's any kind of legal um an additional legal context around it because I wouldn't want to, I I just wouldn't, I I wouldn't want to kind of overlook it if it had a specific reasoning. It just doesn't seem to be a clear rationale as to how that fits into any of this. Also, this is over my quick read and me listening to you talk through it. Um but if there is just any additional context aside from this sentence that could kind of help us as uh you know, as board members in the committee to understand this policy more than it would if if possible, that'd be helpful to get that information.
Okay.
Thank you. Board Member Bruce Australia.
Yeah, I think I'm mostly gonna echo my colleagues, but I agree with all the consolidations and the review with um with the state. Um and you know, since we just did go through a very lengthy process, I'm sure there were lessons learned and I would certainly uh be, you know, welcoming of Dr. Goldson and the administration's re- you know, feedback on on that, um since that was nearly a two-year process, there's probably some lessons learned, so I'm glad we're doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. Um here in this discussion, um I guess, oh or remember Briggs.
All right, this is the last thing. This is just in a maybe an additional piece and this might be for you, Mr. Whitley. Um I was just curious to understand which parts are part, like which parts of these policies are part of the state constitution, which thing, I know which parts are regulations and then statutes, but I think for us as board members on the policy and governance committee, it's really important for us to know because let's say, for example, the state constitution supersedes a regulation in in some way, right? So like, I guess maybe if there's any expert that could be brought in to kind of help us to understand the hierarchy of of these things as an additional piece outside of this, just to kind of understand that for future context, that might be helpful.
So I'll take that under advisement and try to figure out whether there's uh I can present something to the board or whether there's someone more appropriate to present uh some type of uh um instruction to the board with reference to the breakdown as to I guess federal law, state law, county law. Um I I I'll try to figure out exactly what you want um and and find a presentation for you.
Yeah, if it's not, if it's not an additional thing, you know, like a heavy lift, I just was curious if there's anything that exists.
Okay.
Alrighty. So I believe this policy would return for further discussion upon getting um advice from the Attorney General. Um so hearing so Ms. Welsh, if you could just um get the advice and bring it back to the next meeting.
Um so I I would request that we um actually bring it back uh and not the next meeting, but the meeting after that only because I will also be working closely with OGC and with Dennis um to put a draft together and I do just just for the fine intricacies of law, making sure, you know, that it 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 looks right when we bring it back, legally correct when we bring it back as a as a draft.
Yeah, we're going to combine four policies into one, so that may take a little bit and there's no guarantee that the Attorney General's office will be as responsive as we would like them to be. So um I would say maybe and put it off a month. Um yeah, Robin.
I agree.
Okay. Sounds good. Um so I'm looking February twenty eighth or March fourteen. Which one sounds better?
March fourteenth out of an abundance of caution.
Okay. Sounds good. Alrighty, moving forward. All right. Five point oh policies for review and action. So all actions taken in the policy today are pursuant to board policy ninety-three forty um policy development room and numeral four, period seventeen. There are three policies, colleagues, for review or action, first being policy thirty-five oh six, public charter schools. So start with may I have a motion to forward the revised policy to the full board with a recommendation to seek public comment. Any motions?
I moved, I think it's, I moved to, I moved to forward. Yeah, I moved it forward to the board uh for additional comments, I think is what you said. Correct.
And use their second.
I second.
All right, it's been properly moved in second. And now you have the floor to Ms. Welsh for an overview.
Okay, so um the public charter school policy, and I did share much of this at the last meeting, but the public charge school policy uh has been revised previously. It basically just listed out what a public charter school was and now it actually incorporates what the um what education article nine dash one oh one and uh the other um uh sections require, which says that the our policy needs to provide guidelines for the evaluation of public charter school revocation of a charter, reporting requirements and financial programmatic and compliance audits of public charter. So the revisions that are included in this policy really have to do with the Board of Education's authority, the public charter school funding, public charter school student enrollment, public charter school facilities, audit and reporting requirements, evaluation of public charter schools and refocation of a public charter school. I have, if we just look through quickly, if you see where it says uh stop right there, go back up just one second, uh there you go. I did, um if I remember correctly, board member Fields had requested about adding some language that talked about not only um you know, that this provides an opportunity for innovation and everything, but that we as a school system learns uh for other schools learn from the public charter schools and vice versa. So I added language that says the board is also committed to applying lessons learned from public charter schools, but also expects public charter schools to apply lessons learned from traditional public schools to support success for all students for all public schools and to encourage positive transformation in public education. So I I was hoping that language would pick up what you had requested. And then if you go a little bit further down, um Cindy, there is a section that I added, uh language that board member Briggs had requested. I just need to, it should show up. There. Uh no, is that? No, that's not it. Keep going.
It's page four or six.
Go back, is it right here? Gender, you asked.
I have gender included and then also gender expression. And so I did incorporate that in there too. And I think those were the only two recommendations. And so I did incorporate that in there too. And I think those were the only two recommendations at the last meeting.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Welsh. So colleagues, um any comments? Alrighty, hearing none. Um. Are there any objections to this policy moving forward for recommendation of public comment, to seek public comment? Hearing none, uh motion passes. Uh so this policy will advance for public comment um to seek public comment by the Board of Education. Moving forward, five point two policy oh one twenty two data dashboards. I'll start with can may have a motion to forward the revised policy zero one twenty two to seek public comment by the full board.
Move that we forward pu- uh public uh revised policy oh one two two uh to the board for public comment.
I second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. I'll now yield the floor to Ms. Welsh for a brief overview, since I know these policies uh we heard about last meeting.
And so um this policy, there have been no changes since we um discussed it at the last meeting because of the fact that um. Uh there might be some, I should say editorial changes, OGC did look at it. Um but other than that, there's nothing um. Nothing, nothing major that was changed because of the fact that we had discussed it and felt that it was appropriate at that point in time. But just to give you a quick overview, because we're talking about data dashboards. Um it and the importance of being transparent to the community and making sure that both the Board of Education and the community have. Uh have an opportunity to really measure the progress that the school system makes when it comes to. The education of our students as well as many other factors in terms of uh the operation of a school system. And so this policy is focusing on the um on our um transformation twenty twenty six equity. And excellent strategic plan. And that particular plan references that the targets that we're gonna use to measure. Is actually gonna be the critical success indicators. And they are being used to measure the main four main outcome goals, which is education excellence, excellence and equity. Workforce and operational excellence and mental health and wellness. And so um this policy, basically, the whole purpose of the policy is to talk about the need for the dashboards and that we would. Uh then provide uh this comprehensive information about these critical success indicators in these areas of. You know, in terms of how we are performing. And I will say that I did have the opportunity to listen to the board meeting, the uh budget hearing. On Thursday evening and uh. Uh when it came to, I think it was questioning um accountability, that conversation came up. And there was a lot of conversation about the critical success indicators and ensuring that our dashboards are actually. Um, you know, present in a lot of different locations, not just one internal thing, but that there's many ways for the community. As well as board members to access information about how we're doing on the cr- critical success indicators. So when the administrative procedure is um developed, um those kinds of details will be incorporated into the administrative procedure. So that we we make our dashboards available to to the community, uh you know, and our and our parents and everything.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Welsh. Um colleagues, any comments? Okie dokie. Alrighty, colleagues, are there any objections to forwarding revised policy zero one twenty two data dashboards to the full board? With a recommendation to seek public comment. Hearing no objections, motion passes. Moving on, five point three policy twenty two fourteen trespass warnings. Um I'll start with may have a motion to forward revised policy twenty two fourteen trespass warnings to the full board. With a recommendation to seek public comment.
I move to forward fourteen disturbing activities and trespass warnings to the full war for public comment.
I second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. I'll now you have the floor to Ms. Welsh for a brief overview.
So this this policy is um was basically revised to really uh cover more thoroughly. All the provisions in law related to uh not allowing individuals on school property. And the main reason is that when a student, when a individual, it doesn't matter who it is, uh has behavior. That is either willfully disturbing, disturbing or otherwise willfully preventing the orderly conduct of activities, functions, administrations or classes at a. A school, uh also an individual molesting or threatening with bodily harm, any student, employee or other individual. Lawfully on school property or school bus or school sponsored activity off school property. Or threatening with bodily harm, any employee at home by any means, including in person, by telephone or electronic means. If the threat arises out of the person's, the employee's employment, then these are all reasons that we would be um. Re- um sending a letter notification to the person indicating that they would not be on school property. And for them to be on school property would be considered trespassing. Um I um. Uh OGC did have an opportunity to review this, and we did add some additional language into this policy that just lays out very specifically. That a person may not willfully disturb or otherwise willfully prevent early conduct. It's basically everything I just told you about, what they're not allowed to do. I, that's actually incorporated now into the standards. Um and then on top of that. Um it also uh talks about the fact that um. Um there, it's gonna be important, uh we have language in there that says that if a person comes on school property, and we do have this in our visitors policy. Uh procedure, school visitors procedure, but we incorporate it into the policy. Uh and I don't, if you keep going down, I should be able to find, that's the part that says what a person may not do. So if you keep going, Cindy. And then um. It also, oh, can you go back up a second? So the law is clear, first of all, that the CEO is responsible for identifying who is, who it is that. Can deny access to school property. And so at this point. Um the school principal designated building administrator, safety, security council, or the CEO may deny access. Uh and that lists what the reasons are. Um and then if you go further down, and we do have language that describes. What the process is for the CEO to um, uh here it is, the CEO may designate and writing additional personnel who have the authority to take action. So in addition to those people, the CEO um absolutely can identify other people who could deny access. But the other piece that was added was that, um and we actually have language like this in our state, state, don't move, please. Come back up where you were, please, Cindy, thank you, they're right there. Um that we would de- demand identification and evid- evidence of um. Uh from a person does uh what their identification is, um so that we know that like they're not. That we know who they are on our school property. So for example, we do have Raptors visitor management system. If you're coming into a school, you have to show your. Identificat- you're like your driver's license, the government ID. Uh but on top of that. Um let's just suppose that there's someone out on like schools in session and there's someone walking. Around on the playground or something, and they are disturbing like a PE class or something, then we would absolutely want to. Uh have them show us their ID and have them escorted up to the to the main office of the school for the principal to talk to them. Because we just can't have that going on during a uh school day. Um and then the other thing is, we do have the information again about who is, has the right to deny access. Uh by writing a letter, and that is the last part, if you keep going down G, uh Cindy, and that lays out the specifics about that. Um and then we do have language, of course, that the um and that was this actually was here last time about the reporting. To MSD, the board is responsible for reporting to MSD about any disruptions that happened the the meet previous e- school year. Um and of course, the CEO would actually be putting that report together so that to see it, so that the Board of Education can send that to MSD. So there there's some uh minor changes to the po- policy, but for the most part, it's pretty similar to what we had previously. Are there any questions?
Any questions or comments, colleagues? Vice Chair Field.
Um question on the denial of access letter. So if someone has issued that letter. How does personnel in the building know that that person should not be in the building? Is that information shared among staff?
So the principal would be responsible to that make sure that staff knew that, so that they would not um allow the person in the building. Um the other thing is, is that we have an administrative procedure that also says that all of our doors, uh external doors are supposed to be locked. Except for the main door that comes into the that that you come into and you have to go through. Um the airframe where you actually, you have to announce who you are and who you're gonna see, show your ID. And then you're supposed to come into the main office and show your ID so that, and they actually scan it into our Raptor visitor management system. So in that process, that absolutely, if that person showed up. Um that that the school staff, the office staff especially would know. Uh uh no, you have been denied access, you are not allowed to be in the building. And if people are following the procedure about keeping the external doors locked, then they're during the school day. Then the the chances of someone walking into the building um at who shouldn't be there is, you know, slim to none. And so. Um and then, of course, the principal would inform staff too, and the AP will lay that out more specifically.
Okay, and and that's the exact reason why I raised that question. Because we know there have been incidents where individuals have entered school buildings, uh not through the, you know, required entrance. And so just so that staff would know that this person um is not allowed in the building.
Thank you. Any further comments? Alrighty, any objections? Alrighty, hearing none, motion passes, and this policy will be moved to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment. That concludes our policies for review and action. Six point oh committee recommendations, there are no policies being forward to see, but there are policies seeking public comment. Um seven point oh new business, two policies are being forwarded for advanced consideration as first reader. So seven point one policy thirty five hundred, the naming of schools, school district facilities. And dedicating areas of schools or school district facilities or grounds and erecting monuments. So in January twelve twenty twenty three, policy thirty five hundred was voted by the full board to seek public comment. No public comments were received. So colleagues may have a motion to forward to the full board. Revised policy thirty five hundred with a recommendation to advance for consideration as first reader. At the February twenty third twenty twenty three Board of Education meeting.
So moved.
There's a second. Second, it's been properly moved in second. Are there any objections to forwarding the full, the policy to the full board for first reader? Hearing none, motion passes and policy will be brought to the full board at their next meeting. Moving on to seven point two, policy forty two hundred, education rules of procedures and hearings requested under. Article six two oh two in appeals and hearings under article four two oh five of the education article. On January twelfth twenty twenty three, policy forty two hundred was voted by the full board to seek public comment. No public comments were received, and so colleagues may have a motion to forward to the full board. Revised policy forty two hundred with a recommendation to advance consideration as first reader at the February twenty three Board of Education meeting.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Has been properly moved in second, and so colleagues, are there any objections? Hearing no objections, policy moves forward for first reading, first reader. Eight point oh governance, no policies being advanced to second reader. Follow-ups from previous meetings will be posted on board docs upon receipt. Next steps, the next policy and governance committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, February fourteenth twenty twenty three at five P M. Meeting will be virtual. Please check the board page on the P C C P S website for more information and the link to join. Or um provide public comment. Chair McHenry.
You realize that's Valentine's Day. Wife's girlfriend, somebody out to dinner. We won't be able to go until seven o'clock.
Well, I mean, you said, the meeting today, we we went right through it, so.
You promised then we're gonna go through it, that's fine. Thank you.
I have thirty years invested in a marriage, so I can't let Prince George's County Public Schools mess that up.
Yeah, just, I wanted to check in on policy five one two two in our scholastic and extracurricular. But we did have that robust discussion last time, and I did note in our minutes that it was coming back. Um I wanted to find out if there's a decision about when that will come back.
So we uh, the decision was to postpone the policy until we could get a member of the administration to give us some advice in terms of extracurriculars. And um athletics and different things like that. Uh we unfortunately couldn't get anyone from the administration to this meeting. Um so the policy has been postponed to hopefully the next policy meeting, if we're able to get a member of the administration. Um just because we didn't wanna have discussion and essentially just be the same as last time, where, you know, a lot of the questions people have aren't answered. And so um the hope is by the next meeting, we will have someone, Ms. Welsh, I see you may wanna say something.
No, I think you're absolutely correct, because I, you were, everyone seemed to be very interested in what the, what the administration, like. How extracurricular activities work in the high school, you know, their thoughts on academic eligibility, all those kinds of things, and any other questions you might have. I did, I did say though, that it might be helpful that if you have questions that you know right off the bat that you have. That if you could send them to me, then I could, I could, or you could send them to Cindy and Cindy could send them to me. I could absolutely. Get them uh to people too, so that they could uh prepare and know what the, what the um. You know, what to be able to respond to, which would probably be very helpful in the preparation.
Yeah, I I appreciate that. I see that opportunity now, and I do raise this uh because for those of us who attended the NSBA. Equity Conference, there there's a lot of touching on extracurricular and access. And I think, uh I think I know that I have some new questions that I may not have asked um prior. So I appreciate that and definitely look forward to the the presentation. So um but I did wanna note on February fourteenth. By having the blueprint drafting as an agenda item, I did wanna call out the amount of time. That we may need uh for that meeting that the uh the 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 chair, uh Sir Marie, you may wanna consider. Timing of that meeting, because I could see very long discussions on multiple items on the fourteen.
Right. Um. We will take that into consideration and we will talk about um. We'll, we'll talk about it. So I'll get back to everyone on it. Um but yeah, thank you, everyone. Thank you for bringing up um concerns and bringing up um that policy. So. Ten point oh closing remarks, I guess. Thank you, everyone, for a great meeting. Um we really. Got everything that we really needed to get done done, and um I think we were really efficient. Um so I thank everyone for being willing to collaborate. Um I thank Dr. Miller for attending our policy governance committee meeting. Um and so colleagues, are there any additional comments from anyone? If not. I would like, is there a motion to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn.
For a second? Been properly moved in seconds to adjourn the January thirty first twenty twenty three Policy and Governance Ma- Committee meeting. Any objections? Hearing none, motion passes and good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.